Call this meeting to order the City Commission of Rio Grande City. It is Wednesday, March the 13th, 2019, approximately 6:03 PM. Here in Commissioner's Chamber, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite 8, Rio Grande City, Texas. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Jones, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
All hands, thank you, Lord, for allowing us to get together today. I ask you to bless all the residents of Rio Grande City, all the law enforcement, firefighters, and guide us to make the best decisions for all the residents of Rio Grande City. In all this, I ask, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to follow the command of one nation under God, in the base of our liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, we the nation's liberty, Texas, one state under God, one of the cities of the world.
Next, business and orders, item 1B, roll call and finding of quorum. Ms. Peña?
Mayor Villarreal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza. Mayor Protem Garza, it's that's the Commissioner Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Next, business and orders, item 1C, departmental reports. First up, Mayor and Commissioners, we've got Ms. Foltz. Hello, Ms. Foltz.
Hello. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, mayors and commissioners, Ms. Kate Corran will be here to make a presentation. She's stuck in traffic, so can we wait a little bit for her report?
Okay, absolutely. Next up, Mr. Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, just want to update you on some of the TCQ reports that we're working on. Uh, we're currently doing an assessment on all lift stations to see what upgrades are being needed. Uh, I'm actually scheduled to go out with Rio Delta tomorrow to visit some of those sites and get a cost estimate of what it's going to cost. Some lift stations need to be upgraded, so we just want to get those numbers and have an accurate number of what we're looking at, needing to spend to get everything up to code. Um, the VFW lift station was officially turned on yesterday. Uh, I know, uh, sorry, Mr. Garrett was out there with us yesterday, so we officially got that one. Uh, the projects that are still pending right now are Solis Lift Station and the BBA Bank, so they're still working on those two. Um, we had a, we had a great conversation with TCQ, myself and Mr. Perez this week, uh, in reports, in regards to the reports that they received from us last month. Unfortunately, because we're still pending some of these projects, our case is staying open, but they were very happy to see that we had sent them all this information, updated their information, so they updated their files. Uh, they were very happy with the progress that we're making, and they just asked that we continue to send them updates on everything that we've got going on. Obviously, we have some contracts on the agenda right now which are going to help us move the ball in eventually closing out some of these projects with TCQ, I mean, these violations with TCQ. So, once we get that ball rolling, I'll start to keep on forwarding them information. Uh, but the good thing is that, based on the conversation we had with them this week, uh, they were very pleased with some of the information they've received, and they just asked that we keep on forwarding this information so they can update their files as well, too. Personnel, I know two, we just hired two employees in the wastewater department and a backhoe operator, and they just, they all started this Monday, so we want to thank them for joining us here at the city of Rio Grande City. And, um, there's some miscellaneous items, but other than that, uh, some of the items that we have to address are on the actual agenda, so I'll wait until that time, okay? Thank you.
When are they starting?
Oh, sorry.
When are they starting? You said you just hired-
They started this Monday, sir.
Are they here today?
No, sir, they're not. I can, I can ask them to come in the next meeting if you'd like, please. Yes, sir, I will, yeah.
Mr. Cruz, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What do you mean by evaluating the possible upgrades of the lift stations? Aren't they, aren't they new lift stations?
Well, the, some of the older lift stations we have, Commissioner, uh, there's some lift stations that are, uh, operating on one pump, uh, for some reason-
Okay, so you're not about the ones that are being-
No, 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 sir, I let me-
Outside of the ones that are new.
Yeah. Outside of the ones that are being constructed right now. We want to make sure that all lift stations are in compliance, so that we don't run into the decision a year down the road where we got these lift station fixed, and then a year down, whoa, now you're in violation for some other ones, so-
So, we're, we're doing seven, correct?
I'm sorry?
Seven new ones?
Yes, sir.
How many more do we have left that need to be upgraded?
There's 12 total, 12 lift stations total. So, we're working on making sure that those other five are up to code and, and, and something, it may be something as small as just making sure the fence is up, or, uh, there's proper equipment there that needs to be there. So, it may be little things, it may be nothing at all, but we want to make sure that we don't have any other lift stations that come into violation with TCQ.
I got you.
And once we are done with these, once we are done with these seven, then in the future, we, of course, we can continue to-
Yes, sir.
-take care of the rest of them, maybe on a yearly basis, as you mentioned, make sure we maintain them and-
Yeah, that's the exact goal, is to, once we finish the construction of all these seven lift stations, now to come to the council and say, okay, this is what we have. Uh, so, like you said, on a yearly basis, we can start upgrading those other ones. Some of those pumps, as you know, are very well outdated, um, and so we can approach it however the council feels at that time.
Okay.
Remember, there's two that we have property issues with.
Yes.
That are currently slated to be replaced.
Yes, and I'm glad Mr. Perez brought that, there's two that we have property issues with. Uh, we have notified TCQ of those issues through our engineer, and they are aware of that. Um, they know that we're trying to move the ball, so as, like they said, as long as we have that communication with them and they, and we show that we're trying to move the ball in closing out these, these violations, they're going to continue to work with us. But Mr. Garrett has been very diligent in trying to get those properties under control so that we can actually get in there and do the construction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Guedes?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Just to give you a quick update on some of the EDC work, uh, most recent EDC work, as you know, the EDC chose to take a closer look at Rio 2020 and update that strategic plan, re-engaging the public for their input, that would develop a concise and detailed plan that takes us into the next five years. We're crossing our Ts, we're dotting our Is, and we should have a final version for the commission and the EDC to review as early as next month. Um, also, I know that we have notified you of this, but we're pleased to announce that a date has been set for the groundbreaking ceremony of Regency Health Care's new and upcoming nursing and rehabilitation facility just down the street from City Hall. Of course, the details as far as the times and such are still being worked on, and we'll let you know as soon as we have that information. We're excited for this project. As I've said before, it will add, it at minimum, 120 much-needed nursing and rehabilitation beds, and as many as 250 new jobs in Rio Grande City. This will be the, the company's ninth facility in the Rio Grande Valley, and I want to thank Mr. Perez and Mr. Milan and my staff, who worked on letters and maps and research to help assist this, uh, company determine its final location. And so, they're just down the street from our facility, and we're very excited that they will be breaking sound very, uh, breaking ground very soon. And also, we had the pleasure of coming to support one of our very own department directors last month at an event. The city of Hidalgo and its Border Friends Committee created the Rio Grande Valley Walk of Fame, which recognizes the life achievements and the significant contributions of individuals who've made a difference in the valley and across South Texas. Last month, Rio Grande City citizens, Ms. Norma Gomez Foltz, Mr. Juan and Maria del Carmen Caro, were conducted into the Rio Grande Valley Walk of Fame at the State Farm Arena. The city selected to honor Ms. Foltz, our library director, for this honor. She has been a champion for the public library and has been referred to as a trailblazer and a rock star by her peers across the state and across the nation. Ms. Foltz has worked diligently to expand the library's book collection to include a vast inventory of digital publications. She's partnered with Workforce Solutions to provide job seekers a place to explore job opportunities, and united with UTRGV Small Business Development Center to host business lectures for small business and entrepreneurs. She's also integrated monthly craft programs, family game nights, and a summer reading program that continues to grow and encourages accelerated reading among our city's youth, and, uh, and is geared to using the public library among Rio Grande City residents. Her work in advocacy has allowed our public library to continuously expand its services and provide city residents of all ages a place to read, learn, make new friends in a safe and comfortable environment. And we have with us a plaque that was presented to Ms. Foltz. I know that not everyone on the commission had an opportunity to join us at this event, but I would like to call Ms. Foltz forward to receive this plaque once again before the city commission for a photo.
Ms. Foltz, would you care to say a few words?
I just want to, again, say thank you to the, to you, Mayor, the commission, to my staff, who's all here today. Uh, I'm very appreciative of our volunteers, the friends of the library, all the people that have come along to help us. You know, we started in 1990 as Starr County Public Library, and in 2005, we became Rio Grande City Public Library. And it just seems like everything changed when, you know, we got a newer building. Started off in a building with, that was less than 1,000 square feet, so, of course, with a bigger building comes more programs, more opportunities, and we're just very, very grateful. Thank you.
Take a picture, Ms. Foltz.
Glad to have you, Ms. Foltz. You remind me of the little engine that could because of the resources that we understand we have limited resources for our library, how we're able to make it to meet and make it one of the best libraries in the state of Texas. We consider being 100% of the library in the state of Texas. We do it with, again, the resources, the limited resources that we have. We think that, yeah, we will do it, and it's possible, and we gave it up to you and all your staff. Awesome. Congratulations. Fantastic. A team member to make that possible. Thank you, and thank you.
And Mayor, Commissioners, the Rio Grande City Chamber of Commerce chose to honor Mr. Juan, a veteran battle owner of the Rio Grande City Stock House, and he, of course, invited Mrs. Guevara to join his family, which she didn't have to participate. So, she, when she returns, will be able to actually make communication with him. We see that already. I would certainly hope for him to be able to do that, which is here.
So, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yep. All right. Next, business and orders, item 2, consent agenda. If I am saying a rule of Department of Labor request, I am to be approved of minutes from previous speed, and I am to see a total of action taking application of the RGCC on March 5, 2019.
Mayor, would you like to say your name, Mr. Perez?
We have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez to approve items 2A, 2B, and 2C, a consent agenda. We have a second by Commissioner Jones, opposed and favor signified by saying aye. I oppose. Please carry on. Next, business and orders, item 3, resolutions. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2019-4, approving the submission of a planned application to the office of the governor for the Bush Border Star grant program 3066004 for the period of September 1st, 2019, to August 31st, 2020.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The, uh, the grant is $156,000, and, uh, this is also for the Royal Gulf Corporation that, uh, is in the, the Royal Gulf Border Star, and I'm, uh, still in our, uh, for the, uh, that's a request that we're, we should take there, send it here.
Any questions? Anything with filter? Sure. Okay, and I'm motion to approve item 3A, Commissioner Ramirez. Second by Commissioner Foltz, opposed and favor signified by saying aye, by saying aye. Next, business and orders, item 3B, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2019-5, opposing claims of a US Mexico border national emergency declaration and supporting the city's history of providing quality and progressive municipal services to ensure the general health, safety, and better quality of life in all Rio Grande City. Mayors and Commissioners, we continue the resolution, 3B. Taking an opportunity to read it, this resolution number 2019-5, a resolution opposing a US Mexico border national emergency declaration, approving the city's history of providing quality and progressive municipal services to ensure the general health, safety, and better quality of life in all Rio Grande City residents. Whereas the President of the United States of America, Donald Trump, and his administration have disseminated misinformation to the electoral official across the country regarding the guarding border security priorities, including calling for the US Mexico border national emergency declaration. And whereas the data from the Customs and Border Protection CDP illustrates that no crisis exists, reporting that fiscal year was the lowest level of illegal passport migration record, and whereas within the city of Rio Grande City, drug offenses, assaults, and other incident, incident reports are now compared to this time last year, and whereas we support the men and women serving in multiple enforcement agencies, they continue to protect the nation and our city, and whereas family separation policy and threats imposed to southern border are not only immoral, but they threaten the country's moral fiber, and whereas such threatening rhetoric and misinformation deters business growth and other civic remit and passions. This time, I'm having a question to thought some, a few conversations. It is clear that our area in the last few years has turned down through much of a rhetoric at national level, and this is something that the commission has considered for a resolution. Again, in a sense, denouncing President Trump's, of course, or did I say denouncing President Trump's, you know, that will probably overreach by the executor in this time, another motion. Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution number 2019-5, Commissioner Foltz. I'm sorry. We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, for the discussion, opposed and favor signified by saying aye. I oppose. Please carry on. Next, business and orders, item 3C, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2019-6, adopting the single Rio Grande City to the rest conviction of deferred litigation policy. Please. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, this is to hopefully help us clarify our position on the arrest policy. Uh, one time, the city, you know, was very concerned about their policy manual, uh, for following the guideline that we got to be arrested, we need to fix that. So, this is where I want to include the substance of the information in that manual. We are making some changes, for example, the old policy called the equal levitation of, after being arrested within 48 hours, but it seems also rare, we're changing that a few times, okay? Uh, and then we go forward, it's a B, also, depending on what type of fine, whether you can pay it, and so on and so forth. It's not a simple act. We simply got arrested, we got that. I understand it was a very, uh, loyal employee, dedicated, hardworking, he gave here for years, and he simply got arrested at the end, who had not convicted, it was clear, but yet, it was a policy of, it was imperative to, to, to somebody that was very dedicated to the city, you know, long years here, uh, helped, uh, did a solution to the, the, the financial problems of the city, each part of it, it's a massive, but it led to, unfortunately, we just came to prove, come back, we got that situation. Hopefully, this will clarify some of that, that we know that real people are not just on the surface, I don't know, it seems a little weird. So, again, we have completed the resolution, uh, that's, you know, practically, you know, we need to do the revision, the approach, and, 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 so, it's very, I think, I think, we solved a lot of issues that have come up in the city, and I said that that was a good person, and I think it's clear for the person, for the father of, for the, uh, of, 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 And we don't see that until they pass, and then that burden falls on the next taxpayer. So that's, that's, that's an important evaluation to take into consideration.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, likewise. Next, business and orders, item 4D, receive a report holding discussion and provide staff direction on houses that need to be demolished in the downtown area. Mr. Milan?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The.
Good evening, Mr. Milan, how are you today?
Doing good.
All right.
Like the weather, by the way.
A little warmer, sir?
Yes. Well, in a joint effort with EDC, the Main Street Program, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Planning Department, the city will start the beautification of downtown. Main Street Program and EDC, I know they're working on some murals downtown, on some of the walls that are either close to dilapidation stage, or they need a little coat of fresh paint. Priorities given to those properties that are, again, in a dilapidated stage. The program will start at the 300 block of Main Street, of the building that used to be that held the triple L carpets. That wall is considered for one of the murals, I understand. Also, on the, while that same building, inside, you have a collapsed roof. The planning department is working with the owner themselves to persuade him and incentivize for, to get it all off, and have him personally get rid of the debris. So that will turn the property not only, not from a, from a nice store, it's going to be now an attraction. It's going to have a new painting on the side, and it's going to be clean, you won't see a collapsed roof anymore. So that's, that's the beginning to, with, obviously, with the funding we have at this point.
So my question would be, where would we place the property across mottledines that's about to fall apart and maybe hurt somebody? And we're at risk, you know, that something may happen?
Actually, yes. We already made contact with owners, should be coming to town either late this week or early next week.
But where would that fall in the priority list?
That's, that's, it will be next in the priorities.
Yeah, I know that's something we need to consider in the future, as far as the, I know we've moved on ordinances, and we've visited with individuals to try to get them to renovate some of these buildings, to bring them up to code. But it might be time now to start looking at an ordinance to make sure that it forces people to do something with those buildings, as opposed to just wait.
Correct.
And maybe we're already at that phase, because I know we've taken it slow, but maybe it's time to consider, see what other communities are doing regarding that. Because I know other municipalities have ordinances that dilapidated buildings, especially in the downtown areas, somehow they need to bring them up to specs, and not have consequences as a result of not doing that, so maybe that's something we can start looking into, Commissioners.
We do have building standards and codes. However, it's obviously easier to work with the owner, where it's a compromise.
Right, it's always easier, but there are going to be times when the reality is.
Correct.
That's not going to happen, so what are we doing?
But again, we have, there's also a property on Water, Water Street, it was fired not too long ago, and the owners have also, it's like five or six of them, they started approaching the city already. So that's going to be third one in priority.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Are we taking any action on this item?
So unless you, you mentioned those two properties as being a priority, unless you want to go a different way?
Is there any liability, Mr. Milan, on these properties? Or what's the process exactly? Decide notifying the property owner, obviously?
Well, I talked to Mr. Milan before we walked in here and discussed that. I think the best approach is, like he said, talking to the owner, see if they give him permission, or see if you can work with him, offer them some help regarding the dumpsters or the bringing out the, whatever it's going to be knocked down, and then the city may be taking over it at some point, where you're limited with liability, with the people.
What happens if they totally refuse?
Then there are a couple of actions. You can, there are some city ordinances, you can do some citations, go through the court, the municipal court, get them fined, and every day that there's a violation, that you can fine them up to $500. Now, that's going to take some time. Other options are condemnation.
That's the reason I asked.
Yeah. Other options are condemnation and things like that. That might be a little bit expensive for the city, then.
Right.
But I think the best approach at this point is the way he's saying, is approaching the owners, and saying, how can we work with you in getting this property?
I agree.
And I agree, that's the best approach, is to sit down with the owners and try to convince them.
Help them clean up the property.
Right. By all means, that's the best way to go about this, but we'll see, once you visit with them, then you'll let us know, keep us abreast of that.
So we can try those two properties and do lessons learned, see what we come back with and say, what worked in work, and how we can go forward.
That's the one, the property process, fit in our list?
Well, outside the downtown area, we already have three properties, but just by working with the owners and offering well-ups and low-ups.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we taking action on this item?
You don't have to. Yeah, they're working on.
Okay, moving on to item 5A, contracts and agreements. Discussion and possible action to approve contract with Smartware Group, DBA Dude Solutions, is that correct, Dude?
Yes.
Solutions through an existing contract with Sourcewell, contract 110515, for customer relation management software for the Public Utilities Department, 5A.
So, I don't know if one's here, but last time we had approached Commissioners and Mayor with Asela, and as we started getting into more of what they do and what they offer, and of course, we were looking at other cities as, you know, something to bounce off and say, well, if the city of McAllen's doing it, it must be something good. Well, as we dug a little further into those cities that are larger, we found some issues with the product that we, that they had run into from the maintenance side and support side. And so, once we found that out, and what the costs were, and the delays and problems they were having, we backed off on that solution, for that simple reason. Just because they have it and it's working for them in a larger city, doesn't mean that's the right solution for us. So we backed off, and we went looking again and searching and trying to get a better solution. We found Dude Solutions that is out there now, and they basically offer something very similar, it's very basic. Somebody is driving around, they see a pothole, or they see trash that hasn't been picked up, they can report it through their smartphone, submit it to the system online, and then it gets routed to the right department. And that department may be broken into teams, and it gets to the different teams at the appropriate time. So that gives them one way, they can also call in, and one of our specialists that enters the phone can take the information and route that work request. Same as Asela, it's just a different company. And that's what we're asking for, to consider going forward with that, instead of going through Asela, because of the problems we've discovered.
What is the cost?
Uh, there's two, give me a second.
36, 43?
Yeah.
4300?
They curated it for us, 4300, and then it's going to stabilize for the full year.
So the total initial investment is going to be 11,331, is that correct?
And that's to convert us. That's to set us up and design everything for us, set it up the way we need it, and then it stables off every year, and it's going to be a 100-year basis.
Right. And just to make sure that the benefit to the Public Utilities Department is going to be what? Just to be clear, what's the benefit? And I know you mentioned a few, but what else?
Well, I know that this is going to be used for all departments. I know the Public Utilities Department's on here, but the goal is to use it for all departments. The two things I can, two words I would bring to mind is accountability and efficiency, is what it's going to bring to the table. Right now, our crews are actually writing everything out on paper. Everything's being routed in on paper, and they submit that, we've got to type it in. What this system will do is now, like Mr. Pettis said, if there's an issue outside, it's reported immediately. Our crews will have iPads where they won't have to come in, you know, in the afternoon the next day to follow up on an issue. They'll have it live on them, and be able to address the issue right then and there. Mayor, if there's a particular situation or problem that you want to find out about, Mr. Pettis no longer has to go and track the crew to find out what happened, he has access to it where he can immediately log on and say, Mayor, this is what the situation was, this is how it was addressed, this is what we did to remedy the situation. So it's going to bring efficiency, in the sense that our guys will be out there, and they'll be able to respond to those incidents immediately. And the accountability is that we'll be able to track the work that's being done as well, too.
So the tracking will involve, once the order is created, and then was it satisfied, at what time was completed, or date, and so on?
You get it from start to finish. And then after the fact, if you ever have a follow-up, if for every reason you're approached by constituent, you're able to track that, you know, through that.
And what does the training consist of for the employees to?
Well, I know Mr. Wan was the, and Mr. Wan's the one that was involved in all the training. I sat through some of the webinars along with Mr. Pettis.
It's very user-friendly.
Yeah. And that was the most important thing, we wanted to make sure.
Even, even the resident should be able to pick up, you know, oh, I see where I go to report this, and it gives you a list that you select from and say, they don't have to type a lot of things. You just type in, and it actually captures your address. It says, I'm reporting, you know, water leak, or sewer backup. And so, the other thing that you're going to see is distribution of work.
Yes.
You know, so right now, you have some idea how much work is coming, but this way you'll have more numbers at your fingertips, where you can tell, well, Crew A fixed so many leaks, Crew B fixed so many sewer problems. The distribution, or if you are looking for, I mean, we can't keep up, why is it well? You can start trending, and see how well is the workload increasing. You know, right now, we're just going based on what we see and we know in paper. This, you can actually start plotting things out and say, you know, we doubled in our workload in the last year, we've grown, and we have an increased staff, therefore, that's why you're getting the complaints, you're getting to see things taking longer. So you have more stats behind the scenes that will help.
You'd be able to run some reports?
Yes.
Backtracking, okay.
And plus a turnaround time. You know, people call you and complain, say, you know, I reported this, and you can go back and say, yeah, you called it in, or you submitted it this date, and it was cleared at this time. It's on record.
And there'll be a record of it?
Also, I'd like to add, is accountability issue is the assets. So all the equipment, all the materials that we have on hand, those will have to be, those will also be included into that system as well, too. So as they're checking items out, or as they're using these items for a project, it's automatically being registered in there. So now you have that accountability, and we're able to keep track of all our assets as well, too, and materials that we have on hand. So it's, like I said, efficiency and accountability is the two words that I would say that this program helps us with.
At the bottom line is improving customer choice. I mean, so the customer knows when they submitted something, how long it took us to take care of it, and if there's any delays, it'll be there.
And the contract is through what? Through you? Through yearly contract?
So, and to add to Mr. Pettis, that 11,000, if I'm not mistaken, that's just the initial cost, that's for the training, that's for the setup fee, that after that, like you said, the yearly fee is not nearly as much, that's the initial cost for the setup, the training, everything that we have to go through to get the system into up and running, essentially.
And you mentioned iPads as well, is that something, we're going to have to incur a different cost for those?
They already have them.
We already have all that, so we're ready to be set up, okay.
Who gets the iPads?
Mayor Commissioners, may I add that as you're having this discussion, I don't know the full details of this particular contract, but it is something that came up during our strategic planning discussions with the public, and this was identified as something that would engage the public in their civic participation of informing the city of issues or concerns they may have in their neighborhoods. So this is, this is right up the alley on civic activity that we want our residents to be engaged in, so just thought I'd add that in there.
You should also be able to plot out through GIS or the maps, and saying, you know, we've had an unusual high number of leaks in this area. Through time, you should be able to go back and say, you know, that is correct, we've cleaned, we fixed 15 leaks in this two-block area, or that is not correct, it's not really there, it's not being supported based on the data we have. So right now, we're blind, we just go and hit the road and go fix. So there's no plotting or reporting, telling you, where are we having a leak from now? If I see somebody in the same area, why are you still fixing another leak this week there? Didn't we just fix five of them in the last month? I mean, it's a hit or miss.
will do is now, like Mr. Perez said, if there's an issue outside, it's reported immediately. Our crews will have iPads where they won't have to come in, you know, in the afternoon the next day to follow up on an issue. They'll have it live on them and be able to address the issue right then and there. Mayor, if there's a particular situation or problem that you wanna find out about, Mr. Perez no longer has to go and track the crew to find out what happened. He has access to it where he can immediately log on and say, Mayor, this is what the situation was, this is how it was addressed, this is what we did to remedy the situation. So, it's gonna bring efficiency in the sense that our guys will be out there and they'll be able to respond to those incidents immediately. And the accountability is that we'll be able to track the work that's being done as well, too.
So, the tracking will involve, once the order's created, and then was it satisfied? At what time was completed or date and so on?
You get it from start to finish. And then after the fact, if you ever have a follow-up, if for every reason you're approached by constituent, you're able to track that, you know, through that.
And what does the training consist of for the employees to?
Well, I know Mr. Juan was the, and Mr. Juan's the one that was involved in all the training. I sat through some of the webinars along with Mr. Perez.
It's very user-friendly.
Yeah. And that was the most important thing, we wanted to make sure.
Even the residents should be able to pick up, you know, oh, I see where I go to report this, and it gives you a list that you select from and say, they don't have to type a lot of things. You just type in, and it actually captures your address. It says, I'm reporting, you know, water leak, or sewer backup. And so, the other thing that you're gonna see is distribution of work.
Yes.
You know, so, right now, you have some idea how much work is coming, but this way you'll have more numbers at your fingertips where you can tell, well, Crew A fixed so many leaks, Crew B fixed so many sewer problems. The distribution, or if you are looking for, I mean, we can't keep up, why is it well? You can start trending and seeing how well is the workload increasing. You know, right now, we're just going based on what we see and we know in paper. This, you can actually start plotting things out and say, you know, we doubled in our workload in the last year. We've grown and we have an increased staff, therefore, that's why you're getting the complaints. You're getting to see things taking longer. So, you have more stats behind the scenes that will help.
You'd be able to run some reports?
Yes.
Backtracking, okay.
And plus the turnaround time. You know, people call you and complain, say, you know, I reported this, and you can go back and say, yeah, you called it in or you submitted it on this date and it was cleared at this time. It's on record.
There'll be a record of it.
One of the things also I'd like to add is accountability issue is the assets. So, all the equipment, all the materials that we have on hand, those will have to be, those will also be included into that system as well, too. So, as they're checking items out or as they're using these items for a project, it's automatically being registered in there. So, now you have that accountability and we're able to keep track of all our assets as well, too, and materials that we have on hand. So, it's, like I said, efficiency and accountability is the two words that I would say that this program helps us with.
At the bottom line is proving customers' trust. I mean, so the customer knows when they submitted something, how long it took us to take care of it, and if there's any delays, it'll be there.
And the contract is through what, with you?
So, yearly contract?
So, and to add to Mr. Perez, that eleven thousand, if I'm not mistaken, that's just the initial cost. That's for the training, that's for the setup fee. That after that, like you said, the yearly fee is not nearly as much. That's the initial cost for the setup, the training, everything that we have to go through to get the system into up and running, essentially.
And you mentioned iPads as well. Is that something, we're gonna have to incur a different cost for those?
They already have them.
We already have all that, so we're ready to be set up. Okay.
Who gets the iPads?
Mayor Commissioners, may I add that as you're having this discussion, I don't know the full details of this particular contract, but it is something that came up during our strategic planning discussions with the public, and this was identified as something that would engage the public in their civic participation of informing the city of issues or concerns they may have in their neighborhoods. So, this is, this is right up the alley on civic activity that we want our residents to be engaged in. So, just thought I'd add that in there.
You should also be able to plot out through GIS or the maps and saying, you know, we've had an unusual high number of leaks in this area. Through time, you should be able to go back and say, you know, that is correct. We've cleaned, we fixed fifteen leaks in this two-block area, or that is not correct. It's not really there. It's not being supported based on the data we have. So, right now, we're blind. We just go and hit the road and go fix. So, there's no plotting or reporting telling you, where are we having a leak from? Now, if I see somebody in the same area, why are you still fixing another leak this week there? Didn't we just fix five of them in the last month? I mean, it's a hit or miss.
That's a very, very good point on the efficiency standpoint. Right now, we're sending these crews out and they're like, I think I was in that area. I think we already did this. And to, I'm new here, so I don't know, but it helps us keep a track record. Potholes. If we're filling the same potholes every two months, every three months, well, something's wrong there. Now, we have a track record so that we can come and approach you and say, hey, we need the funding for this area. Obviously, there's a bigger issue. We need to redo the pavement in here, or maybe there's an issue in the infrastructure. There's a leak or somewhere that we need to know. But now, we have that data to show us the history of what's going on in that area. So, that was a very good point by Mr. Perez.
Point well taken. At this time, do we have a?
Mr. Perez, do you know of any other cities that are currently using this software?
Juan can vouch for that.
I know that you had mentioned that with regards to the previous one, there were some issues that you were able to.
McAllen.
But with this one, have you heard of?
There's some local cities. I think Alamo was one of them. I'm not, don't quote me on that, but I know that we had gone through at least four or five different companies to see which one was gonna be the best for the city of Rio Grande City. And the biggest thing that Mr. Perez wanted to emphasize was, like Dalina said, was the accessibility for the constituents and for citizens to be able to access it from their phone, and then for us to be able to have that efficiency and accountability on the system as well, too.
I believe it's Alamo, but we'll confirm that for you.
But there were, there were about five different programs and this one was the one that was highly.
Mr. Perez, has any city has had any issues with it? And also, how are we notifying the residents of this?
We'll publicize it.
Yeah.
And so, we'll put it on the website also. So, they'll have a link to download to their phone. No different than what the 311 is for McAllen.
It'll have to be an active campaign. We put it out there and we let them know, but...
Is there any hurry on getting this? I would really like to see some sort of layout or something. Somebody to come in here and show it to me.
Sure. I would encourage you to come for a training when we have a training or a live demo. We can definitely schedule that.
It's not that I would guess it. I would just like to see a protocol or something, you know, before we even take action.
Okay. I think it's something similar to the school district is using. I think they use a school dude, and I think it's pretty much similar. We go online, we.
Facility dude, yes.
There's a, yeah, you create a work.
Work work. Essentially, that's what it is.
It gets directed to the director and then to the work leaders and it gets done.
You have it on?
Yeah, school uses something similar. It's called a school dude, but you know, it's probably the same thing.
Probably just to change the name.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, it works well. I like it.
It's a, it's, bottom line, it's a customer relationship management system. You're having integration to engage the public or the residents and you're providing a service for them. In the background, it's actually routing stuff to the different departments based on rules, so that you get the work to the right people. So, if their call comes in or they submit it, you don't, you don't really have to have a person there. They submit it themselves. It goes based on rules and says, you know, the next person that's up for another ticket or another request goes to this team or this group. So, it's not that you have to be there pushing things to get things moving along. So, hopefully, these work requests get to them quicker. There'll be some oversight that they'll have to learn and stay on top of things to make sure there's quality work being done.
You're gonna have to prioritize, Mr. Perez, as far as the, whatever requests are being submitted, because you're gonna have.
Sure.
Multiple requests of different things.
Yes.
So, obviously, you're gonna have to keep track of all those things, and some might go unaddressed for one, two, three weeks, you know, because that might not be a priority.
Yeah, six-inch leak versus a two-inch leak.
Yeah, or, you know, or trash at a certain avenue or whatever, but you know, again.
One of the things that are identified on that program is priority. It's not a priority, I forgot the term, but it's urgency, and you can kind of rank them to where this is an emergency, you got a major leak, you send crews out right away versus it's a pothole as soon as we can get out there, or like you said, trash, that's, so there is a ranking.
Some of the concerns may be also based on, you know, obviously, funding.
Yes, sir.
So.
Yes.
Kate, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I support.
Okay, so you move to?
To approve item?
To approve item?
Five A.
Five A is presented. We have a second at this time?
Five second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Jones, and motion by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next business in order, and before we do that, I see Ms. Foltz. Did you wanna, if no one objects, we can come back to Ms. Foltz's presentation.
Yes.
No objection? Thank you. Come on.
Okay. Mayor Commissioners, with us this evening, we have Kate Haran. She's with the McAllen Public Library, and she's also with the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you for making the trip out. I understand there was traffic on the way over.
We were delayed a little bit, yes. I know now Military Road very well. So, as Norma said, my name is Kate Haran. I'm the president of Texas Municipal League Directors Association and also the library director in the city of McAllen. I'm very honored to be here to present the 2018 Achievement of Library Excellence Award to the Rio Grande City Public Library. This is, what I understand, the second year in a row that you all are receiving this award. And Director Norma Foltz wrote an outstanding application that met all of the application requirements. And Rio Grande City Public Library was one of only fifty-one libraries out of a possible five hundred and fifty public libraries in the state of Texas, so that's amazing. Under her leadership, this past year, the library went beyond traditional book lending and storytime, and as an example of 21st century library services, offered 3D printing for children and teens, and small business development, including finance, business advisement, and financial training, as well as supporting workforce development with the job fair, having economic impact. That's what we do as libraries now. Healthy children remained an important focus of the library. She ensured that children continued to read over the summer by providing educational, motivational, and fun reading programs. Families were encouraged to read every day through a program partnering with Texas A&amp;M. Part of what 21st century libraries do is we forge a lot of different partnerships. The library fed more than minds, though, over the summer. In partnership with Rio Grande City School District Cafe on the Go, the library served lunch to children on Fridays to reduce food insecurity. So, I hope that you're all as proud as I am of Rio Grande City Public Library and of Norma. I want to congratulate the city's mayor, commissioners, and management for supporting the library, and great leadership deserves to be recognized. And with that, I'd like to present this 2018 Achievement of Library Excellence Award. Represented to you.
And we'll come and take a picture of everyone, please, of your staff. about the wonderful library staff and services and Ms. Foltz and her team. Congratulations and everybody else, of course, Mr. Perez and everyone that's part of that. Congratulations. And thank you for the work that you do. Next business in order is item 6B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Contract with McGuire Iron Incorporated through an existing cooperative contract with Byboard, contract 50416, to make repairs and improvements to 300 KG elevated storage tank located. We'll back an open session at eight twenty PM. It's item nine. We convene into regular session in consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. Item nine A, there's no action. Nine B, there's no action. Item nine C?
I'm here. I motion to authorize city manager to negotiate and enter all necessary documents to hire Victor Canales to provide legal services to the municipal court as the RGC Municipal Court prosecutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Item nine D, no action. Item nine E, no action, and item nine F, no action. At this time, have a motion to adjourn.
I support.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez. Second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. It is?
Media violation.
Eight twenty-one PM.
Um, you wanna add?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Galton. He's the most I've met you before. Thank you. McGuire is a hundred and five years old company. All we do is tanks. So, we're able to, with our program, it's a full maintenance program, it's what we call the first tenure program. Basically, you can see, if you go down the chart, the 1.5 million, 300, the 1 million composite, 750 at Los Lomas, the Clearwell, and your stamp pipe at Los Lomas is smaller. This plan calls for rehabbing the water plant, the 1.5 million, year one, and doing tank repairs to the Hidalgo tank, the Los Lomas tanks, and the Los Lomas stamp pipe. You have TQ violations and/or issues with all the tanks. This would fix those violations in year one, get that hot water with TQ. Then, the next year, we would move on and actually do the full renovation of the Hidalgo tank. And then, the other tanks I've inspected last year, we actually, Eisenhower tank, doesn't need any work done till year eight from paint samples and paint and adhesions. Same with the Los Lomas tank and the stamp pipe, that we could put that, push that maintenance off, but every year, you'll get cleanouts or inspections, as you can follow the chart across. And this call, this is a maintenance program. It is a full maintenance program. Anything from weather damage, tank failures, hatch, anything that goes wrong with the tank, we come and fix, and it stays at the same price across the board. So, basically, still your tank, we become responsible for your tank. You have a problem with the tank, then the city manager, you call me, and we have a crew come and fix it. Graffiti, bullet holes, anything that can happen to a tank, we come and repair at that time, unless there's an act of God. Other than that, we come to work on the tank and we repair it. I do yearly inspections. I've already inspected all your tanks. I would do another yearly inspection. This gives us visual eyes on every year, so we know what's going on with the tank. And then, we do the washouts. The reason we do washouts is so we can go inside the tank and actually inspect every seam, every joint inside the tank. This keeps you abreast of where that tank is, and it keeps us abreast of where that tank is, because it's our responsibility to fix it. That is, that is the ten-year, ten-year plan. That is renewable after the ten years. If you wanna continue to maintain your tanks with us, it's basically an evergreen. They just chart out ten years, because tanks in Texas every ten years need an exterior paint job, ten to twelve years, and interior twelve to fifteen years. So, we would push this down the road, whereas we know the 1.5 million in ten or twelve years, we need to repaint the outside anyway. What you're doing is you're paying for that back until ready, so that that will be done. Doesn't show it on the chart, but we would do it like year 11, we would come back and be painting this tank. And that's included in the hundred and the money that comes across the body. And the same with the rest of us. It's our responsibility. The reason to do it this way because it takes everything away from you. If you hire someone to come and contract someone to come and paint your tank, most Texas tank companies hire subcontractors. We unite. So, it's gonna be our crew. So, there's one person to point at, and that would be me. You get in with work, ironwork, metalwork, painting, coating, stand blasting with other companies, and then they stand blasted it, they painted it, they engineered it, they provided the coating. So, everyone starts pointing fingers, and then you have to go into issues with finding out how to fix your tank, because it's no one's fault. With us, it's our fault. So, we take the responsibility off your shoulders. TQ, I file the report every year, give it to the crews. He has them. TQ comes by, let's see the Hidalgo tank, we can pull it out, infected in June. Here's the report. Here's the photos to go with. That was original, an original plan. We've also come up with a secondary plan, which is, as Mr. Perez said, concentrate on the Hidalgo tanks and the 1.5 million tank. Those are your biggest issues. So, we would do exterior renovations and interior renovations, total repairs for the first year of the contract on both of those tanks. This would be what we call a seven-year CST. You have washouts and inspections for the seven-year time, and you also have seven years pay for those renovations. So, that happen to pay, of course, our company is able to carry the load and spread those payments out for you over a seven-year timeframe. That, so basically, if you would go add up seven times, you have sixty grand a year, that's what's gonna cost to already have that tank. So, you can either pay it upfront or for us, we'll spread it out over a seven-year time period. That gives you time to budget to look at your different amounts of money coming in and pay everything off and even flow your budget. And at the same time, we are inspecting your tanks and doing a washout in the third year and the seventh year to tell you what shape your tank's for. But that is a set time period piece.
So, if I may add, this is a managed budget versus, we don't do this and we're on our own, TQ stops by and finds four of the tanks with major violations. You gotta fix within a hundred and twenty days or else. You have him contracted, he's responsible, he's called, he takes care of it. It's the same amount. Or, if we do it on our own, it might be ten thousand, twenty thousand a pop for each tank or more, plus, of course, the exposure of, you know, media coming out and saying, oh, my God, this guy's following. But, so, this assures us of a plan that's stable and consistent and you can manage on a budget.
And this, for your other tanks, if you do the lower plan, it does affect the day you sign the contract. We might not be doing any work for three months, six months, but the day you sign the contract, if next week someone does, your tank starts leaking, we come and fix it.
So, that monthly, that monthly payment, is that gonna change at any time?
No.
So, it's a set payment for ten years?
It's a set payment. That's why it budgets it out for the city.
So, if you encounter some issues with a certain tank, I mean, is that gonna increase the price?
Same here.
If you encounter a certain issue with a tank, is that gonna change the monthly payment?
No. Now, once we take the tank over, if I've missed something, or the first crew comes down, missed something, we fix it, because we should have caught it.
So, I notice on year one, you got three tanks that says just tank repairs, but what exactly does that, you know, address?
Everything, if you go, do you have a contract?
No. Do they have a copy of the contract?
They have a copy.
A copy of the contract's on there?
Contracts? The contract lists everything that needs to be done with the tanks. I've inspected them, we looked at them. That's what needs to be repaired on your tank as we stand here. If something else comes up, another point was made, TQ comes and says, well, this isn't right. We will come and make it right, and it's not charged, it's not changing prices. We just had an experience in Nixon, Texas. I just repaired on the lacoroidal tank, the ones that look like golf balls, and the crew that originally looked at it missed that one edge of the vent, and that's the venting system they have, was actually cracked. You can't see it until they started cleaning the paint off of it. Once it was determined it's cracked, we determined we had to replace it. That's a twenty-five thousand dollar replacement. We, it's under the contract. We said we replaced it on us, because our crew should have caught that the first time we just looked at it. Something you can't really be seen, but we take that into account as we press this out, look. look down everything. We're replacing every thing on your tanks that could possibly be a TCQ violation.
Commissioner Jones, one of the things that's not on here that I know you had asked about is the demolition. The demolition, because obviously that came after the fact that we had these brought to us. There is an option to include the demolition as well too, of the tank that we talked about? And that's a six, you want to explain to him that?
Yeah, that's what brought me down here around the year ago.
That was my question on that demolition.
Well, we got, I did the research.
So, the demolition for that tank would be $60,000. Normally, when we do a demolition, it's charged, $60,000, $50,000, whatever it happens to be. We do a demolition, everything is gone except your concrete pad. You don't want anyone to ruin your concrete pad, because that would cost you a whole lot of money. Leave the construction there, don't worry about it. But we will move everything down to concrete pad, everything will be gone from the site. We leave nothing on the site. I got permission to divide that up into a $30,000 payment, so $60,000, and another $30,000 across the seven-year, or the long-term plan, whichever you go with, to help out the city to keep your budget numbers.
So, essentially, we would be able to put that in our payments as well too?
Half of it.
Yeah, half of it.
And then it's a commodity issue, we're going to have to have, looking at a 2 million gallon tank, you're going to have to have about 10 flat beds, come and load, come and load, come and load, as it goes, haul everything out, dump trucks to haul all the grit and everything that's inside that tank, or been inside the tank, you've got about a foot and a half of metal, that will all be gone, haul metal away, and the crane to hold it as we cut. So, that's all commodities, and we have to pay for, that's $60,000 that's costing us upfront. But because of our company, the way we operate, we have over 900 plans in place across 38 states, that we're able to, we're such an old company, this is our area of expertise, is doing these master plans and working with small communities so we can spread the money out.
Your recommendation is to demolish this tank?
The 2 million?
Yeah, the big one we're talking about?
Yes.
So, I know some people were concerned about, you know, demolition, and maybe keep it as a landmark and use it as a, I don't know, as a mural to advertise, this and that, but I know there's some concerns about possibly, I mean, there's, you know, tornado coming through or some bad weather, that thing might come down or collapse.
Think you showed us some beams that were...
Yes.
So, it's a... That's why I asked you.
They're not beams, you have a missing beam in there, and you have a calcium substrate build up about six inches thick on the side of those tanks. So, if we came in and say we cut two-thirds or three-quarters of the tank away, left like the bulletin board facing the street, you'd spend more than $60,000, $70,000, put reinforcements up, pilings into the concrete, you have now reinforcements up, et cetera, to hold that in place. Because the concrete ring of the tank is the top ring and the bottom ring, and then the beams go across and are supported. So, once you pull all that away, you have a metal wall that is 5/8 of an inch thick standing there. So, you have a kite sitting there on the ground. Now, the good thing is, the foundation will still be there, and that foundation probably is 12 or 14 feet down. So, you can put any metal building you wanted to there, you can put parking there, you could build around a building, put signage on the side, there's a lot of things you can do with that foundation in place that would be a better expense for you than trying to rehab two-thirds of a section or a third of a section of a 2 million gallon tank.
Do our finances support this project?
Yeah, we're with Mr. Cruz on getting the numbers to where we believe they need to be.
Considering it's a seven-year or 10-year commitment, what is the termination clause should it ever come to that?
Well, seven-year commitment, seven-year all work will be done upfront, so if you don't want me to come and inspect your tanks or wash them out, we can end that, it's a 90-day notice to our, my headquarters, and then you pay as much as you owe us.
What is, have you read that termination clause?
We did, we did review the contract and...
Okay.
We, well, again, we didn't find...
Not to say that's going to happen, but let's, considering prior experiences, let's, what is the status on that?
I did not see an issue with it, and actually, this was reviewed by my colleague, Victor, but in my notes, it reflects that we're okay with the contract. There would have been an issue on the termination or anything.
So, let's go back up. How many terminations have you had in the last several years? That you engaged in a contract, you said...
Six, none, in other states. Illinois, you get a number once in a while because of the union situation. When the union expands or grows and you get two groups of the union base, and we're charging a set fee for a washout. What happened in Illinois near Chicago is the union, tank builders' union there said, well, washouts need to be $45,000 instead of $35,000. Our fee was $35,000, the city was forced to terminate, because they work within the union guidelines. So, I mean, it costs the city more money to terminate. Same with the 10-year, 10-years and 90-day, we calculate, we sit down with you, and we look at everything and say, well, this is what you owe us, you agree to it or disagree, then we talk to your lawyer and our lawyer, say, well, this is what we've done, this is what we've done so far, and it costs us much, and then this is what we have. So, if you want to terminate, give us the letter, we terminate, figure it, give us the 90 days to sit down with everybody and figure out what it costs to do that at that time. And very few cancellations, because this is something that helps the city out.
Right, right, and that's the point, obviously, we, this is something that needs to be done, I mean, there's no question there. I'm just looking at the commitment of $1.1 million, and what are we going to, over the 10-year span, I mean, should it come to that, and I'm not saying it is just...
So, what if you missed the exterior renovation and the interior renovation on a tank by a year? You need to move it up.
Need to move it forward?
Yeah, let's say you misdiagnosed it, and it's not going to be eight years in the future, it's going to be, it needs to be maybe seven.
So, my inspection I've done on the 750 KG standpipe.
Right.
I inspected it for two years before, for that year, we wash it out, we see some things inside.
Right.
We will move it up ourselves, mainly because, thank you, mainly because we're responsible for that tank. So, if I see something in here, we take in the 750 KG Los Lomas Works tank, we do the tank repairs this year, touch everything up, go to TCQ, no problems. I do inspect next couple of years, it'll be coming down and do a washout. And we get inside a tank, we're looking at people, they're pitting, and they're cracking along the well, we say, we're going to want to fix that immediately, because if we let that sit for a year, then you're going to develop a leak, and that leak will run and causes continued things. So, we will move that up ourselves from year six to year five, to year four. Actually, this year, we talked to Nixon, Texas, we had scheduled to do two of their tanks, we went ahead and did all three, because the one TCQ came bouncing, yet, well, you have some more violations on this tank, we already knew they did, but the contract said we're going to take care of them, they said, well, we need it done as soon as possible. So, we went ahead and moved all three of their tanks up to year one. We just now, actually today, we finished on this tank there. And we only scheduled it to all in 218, 219, five months in October.
And if I heard you correctly, after year one, all their tanks going to be up to code as per TCQ?
Yes, yes.
Year one.
That's if we do the...
Right, let's say we...
Yeah. Now, if you settle for, if you move to the seven-year plan, that can always be incorporated into a longer plan at the end of the day. If you're like not comfortable with it now, we can move, fix the Hidalgo, fix the 1.5, and then, as we move forward, as you get caught at Los Lomas or composite, then it's like, okay, now we need to put that under the program too. You can bring another tank under the program. Your Garcia Street tank, I know it's not on the program, because there's some discussion whether it's going to be abandoned, it's not being used now. I've actually climbed that tank, looked at it, it could be rehab, it would be expensive, but it could be rehab, depends on your water needs. Where you're at, 85% state, and if you want to increase your water supply, that gives you another 200,000 gallons. That's not on the plan at all, but that could be brought into the plan in the future, two years from now, as the city grows, suddenly you're getting toward the 85%, like, okay, we need more water storage, rehab that tank.
That's the one you told us you need the pipe, right?
That's the Garcia Street, yes, the riser's bad on it, and that's an expensive fix, a riser of that size, that priced out $175,000 to repair that. But it can be repaired, from that.
It's a lot of information, man.
It's, the good part for the city about the contract is, when you sign the contract, it goes into effect at that time on a 10-year plan, anything that happens to the tanks can come and take care of, even if it's not scheduled to be fixed for two years or until next year.
And that was actually my question, in your 10-year plan, you have tank repairs on year one.
Yes.
But if any of these tanks need repairs in year four, five, six, you would do them and then, no, it's charge.
Yes, because if us moving a tank repair up, moving a tank repair immediately, saves us money. We don't want to wait three years, because what happens in Texas is you get sandblasting with dust, it's cold, then it's hot, then it's cold, all the same day sometimes, when water, it's not like your tank's spring. So, if you have a rust spot developing on a tank, for whatever reason, the grass crew cutting grass hits it, and it dings it, and we wait two or three or four years to fix that, instead of having a ding in it where we can come down, clean up around the edge of it, and fix it, now we have a large spot that is peeling, a one called spalling, the water will seep behind it, because the paint's permeable, once it's cracked, water will get into it, and then you're going to shed paint, and that costs us more money to fix. I'd rather come down and fix a spot that big than to wait three years when the spot's three by three. It just makes sense for us to maintain your tank at the top level, the first we're going, we'll wait. And unfortunately, that's a city municipality in Texas, and the mindset that, after trying to educate people not to accept, we're going to do half a million dollars worth of work now, oh, we're great. 10 years down the road, you're going to do three-quarters of a million dollars worth of work on the same two tanks. Why not price it out in the 219 prices, and pay for it, get your work done then, now, get your work done then, and even flow your money.
Yeah, and I was going to say, based on the needs that we have, Mr. Perez, and of course, the concern we've had with TCQ, I think this is a great maintenance plan that's spread out over 10 years, and allows a reasonable monthly amount that we can afford. And I think that, you know, we can address all the issues we have with the water tanks and be okay for the next 10 years. So, I'm comfortable with it, unless you guys have any concerns, Mr. Delany.
I think you said the word maintenance, that's what, you know, it's a maintenance thing, but we don't have concerns, and I apologize on the contract issue, we do have a contract, we did provide, and we'll work with it, but I don't see any issues based on what we review.
Okay.
You know, and, I mean, we'll go ahead and draft it with Mr. Perez's guidance and your guidance.
We, our headquarters is in South Dakota, so every contract you have, we have to change the words, you know, this county, this city, arbitration in this district court, because I can't print up, or I can, and once I know which district court arbitrator is, what specific things you have done, we make the contract to your... I've been told by lawyers out in Markville, when she read the contract, she was, this is the most lopsided contract I've ever seen. It's like, what do you mean? You guys are responsible for everything, and us nothing, and we can get out of it? That's how our company's done it for 105 years, so, it has served us well. We have, like I said, over 900 of them.
What does staff recommend?
We recommend going forward, it would assure us that these tanks are inspected yearly, which was not being done consistently previously. It will assure us of the risk, that they would absorb the risk if something came up that's not in the plan, or TCQ dropped by and found something new, they would be the ones being called. And so...
With the 10 or the 7-year?
Mayor, real quick, just to add to that, and so, if we don't take this approach, we still have to have an inspected yearly and report that to TCQ, and the city would be responsible for that. And you're looking at an average cost of about $35,000 to $4,000 per tank, and that's without any issues or any violations that we may be under, that's just the inspection itself. This route, it's pretty much, in a sense, taking it off our back and saying, okay, now you're responsible for it. Anything that comes through TCQ, they're responsible for now, and I think that language reads in the contract as well too. The biggest question is whether you want to go with the 10-year maintenance plan or the seven, to focus immediately on those two that are in immediate violation with TCQ, and then obviously, the, whether we want to go ahead with the demolition or not as well too. So, there's, it's just a matter of what the council's approach is.
Good decision, all right, so, let's entertain a motion at this time, or any further discussion on this?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to go into an agreement with a 10-year service plan, and to include demolition of $6,000 for the old tank, and do what Mr. Perez recommended, to go pay $30,000 upfront, and then the $30,000 working into the payment plan over the 10 years.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez?
My second.
Have a second by Commissioner Flores. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to meeting out here.
In real hot way.
Thank you.
Make sure the holiday is...
Yeah.
I look forward to sending an updated report to TCQ saying it's their fault now.
Next business and orders, item six, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, section 551.074, personnel matters, and section 551.087, economic development matters. It is 7:30 PM. All right, it is approximate, it's actually 10:00 PM. We're back from executive session. Falt alguien? All right, Commissioner. Let's wait for Commissioner, look at official. His commissioner doesn't want to leave yet.
Can you do it? This is kind of cool.
It's, it looks like a cooler for a new sentence.
Yeah, it's kind of cool.
Certainly, it's nice.
At this point, is items seven, reconvene into regular session and consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following, there's no action on item seven A, and item seven B?
Mayor, I motion to authorize the city staff to finalize and take action as discussed in executive session.
Okay, we have a motion...
Possible motion.
...by Commissioner Flores, second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I opposed? Motion carries. Next, item seven C, there was no action, seven D, no action, and seven E, no action, and seven F, no action. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, this time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Possible motion.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I opposed? Motion carries. Getting adjourned, it is 10...
10:02 PM.